Good evening, I'd like to welcome you this evening to our board meeting. For those of you who are joining us at home, if you have any questions or concerns that you would like to address the board, you can email us at clerk@pulten.cnyric.org. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Action 101, can somebody move it?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 7-0-0. Our evacuation procedure. If for some reason we need to move out of the building for any reason, there is a exit behind the board members, or you could go out the front door of the library and go to the right or the left, and please move away from the building. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We're gonna start with our public forum this evening. Is there anybody who would like to join us? I have Marissa down on our sheet for this evening.
Hi there. Marissa Hanlon. So I'm the mother of two children here in the school district. Sophia, who's in ninth grade, and Liam, who's in fourth grade. And I did want to talk about the new logo. So although I really do appreciate the artist's abilities, clearly that artist is talented. There were easily, my understanding is about 100 artists, including my son, who was in fourth grade, that offered an opportunity to design a logo. Obviously, he wasn't chosen in those final three. So I do want to just keep that in like that when I'm talking, it's not about specifically the artist's abilities. Obviously, this artist is fantastic, and I think it's great that every artist had the opportunity to present their personal opinion and design of what they interpreted a dragon to be. So my son did the same, as well as this artist. I don't even know if it's a male or female, who ended up winning the last vote. But with that said, the thing I would like to have been considered is that my husband, who's an alumni, didn't get an opportunity to take a vote and take a position. My son, who is in fourth grade, although my understanding is fourth graders were supposed to be able to take this vote, I don't know when he had the opportunity to read his email, or if he reads emails and votes. I don't know if it was guided by the students. Possibly he did, and he doesn't know how to communicate. If he does, remember if he did take that vote or not. I do think that even younger students, kindergartners and on, should have had the opportunity to voice their consideration, as well as family members, members in the community. I know that I was given the opportunity at the beginning to have the opportunity to say what logo, when it came down to three, I'm sorry, which was gonna be an eagle, a dragon. I know I had the opportunity at that time, and I think I just assumed that I was gonna have the opportunity to then vote on the actual design later on. I'll admit, I was a bit busy during that exact time that voting was happening. And I know that my daughter had the opportunity to vote, and I was just waiting for myself to get a reminder or something of this sort for me to vote, and it never happened, and then I found out that it had gone through. I am not saying that the communication wasn't clear. When I go back, it was very clear that that was the process that was in place. But now, looking at it, I would like to have had the opportunity to voice my opinion as to the logo. Speaking of the logos, in regards, like I said, the artist did a fantastic job and is a fantastic artist that I don't think is disputed. My son does not have those abilities, but I just, when I looked at those three designs that we were finally looking at, although they were very great artistically, I don't know if it showed the spectrum of young children all the way through in that whole entire spectrum. So something that could be considered in the future, not just the very skilled older students that had those capabilities of artistic abilities. So just something for consideration. I appreciate the work that the committee did. I know that they did do a lot of work, and I appreciate that you all did go through the process that you said you would. I obviously missed a few things, but I think that it would be ideal to consider those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marissa. Moving on to action 1.06. Approving the November 28 regular meeting minutes.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 2. Passes 5-0-2. For our president's report, we have a few meetings coming up. We have one in December. Our health and safety meeting will be in December 19. And then we have some more health and safety policy, regular board meetings coming up in January. So keep that on your agenda. I'm going to ask Mr. Palvino if there is anything added or removed to our agenda this evening.
Just that we're gonna table 5.02. We have a change in our business office, and I want to make sure that as we move forward with the capital project, that we're clear on the construction management costs. So I'd like to table that.
So 5.02, so what event to approve the amendment of construction management services?
Yep.
Go ahead and table that. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Can Brett Dom anything to add to that?
Nope, that's it.
Then at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to you, Mr. Palvino, for the reports and the presentations.
Alright, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome. So I thought I would just kind of reiterate what our time process was with the logo mascot, because that's the first thing on the agenda this evening. And just wanted to acknowledge the process. We started last November. It's hard to believe it's been over a year that this process has gone on. We assembled an advisory committee back in January. They had students, community members, faculty, school building, representatives, district administrators, so on and so forth. That team met from January through May. And as Ms. Hanlon noted when she was speaking, they really led us to what resulted in Red Dragons, that whole process that led to that point. They also had identified a series of traits and things that they wanted to see in the mascot in the future. We adopted in June the Red Dragons name at a board meeting. And in August through September, around September 22, I believe, we had over 85, I think it was 86 kids that submitted drawings of that, and then of their renditions of what one of our mascots could look like. And then in October, we have a district culture team that's comprised of fourth graders through 12th graders. And it's been in place in our district. And we brought them together and gave them the challenge. And we had all of them, all 86, hung up. And they actually wrote down traits that they saw in many different things. So there was actually traits that were considered from a lot of different pictures, our renditions. And then what that evolved into was eventually they broke that down. They identified three. We had a little point system that they created and went through. They had a little training to look for things during that. And then it identified really four artists, three depictions, and one, they just fell in love with the wings. So he was the fourth artist that came together. And they also took note of the feedback that these culture kids identified on many other ones in that event. And then those four artists actually met with city PR. And city PR is, actually has a graphic artist on their team. She was in the public sector, the private sector, and she worked with them as part of the PR team with the kids. So they met for about three, three and a half hours. They made some adjustments, they came back. They really liked the drawings that came forward. They went to the culture team again for feedback, and then went out for the survey. And so then, what's that?
The vote?
And then they did the vote from the survey. We had just under 1,000 kids participate. It was 967, if I remember, I believe. Actually, it's a little bit higher than that now, because I did hit some. So it's around 98, 90 roughly. And then we had those artists then, and we got a lot of the feedback after we made it. We made the announcement on the 14th at a board meeting. And then on the 28th, we did the vote. 28th, it came out into the community. Since then, what's happened is the next day, one of the artists contacted me and said, you know, can I talk to you, Mr. Palvino? We had a great conversation. The next day, I met, I talked with board members, things like that. And I met with the entire of the artists on Friday. And then they've been, actually had two sessions. In my letter of the sixth, we talked about that they're, the kids would be working on some rendition. Well, they're working side by side with the graphic artist and the PR specialist. And it's been absolutely amazing to watch them. I've stopped in a couple of times, the two different days that they've worked. It's amazing what it really looks like. It's amazing what they've accomplished so far. They've still got some more work to do. I think it addresses, they took into consideration a lot of the different things. You know, as they evolve, I think, you know, hopefully when we have our next rendition, that you'll see something that I think captures maybe the essence of what a lot of the feedback has been. And Mr. Didju Arm, he spent a lot of time, he wanted to observe and watch it. It's been terrific. The kids, I wish, if there's anything that I would say about our kids, I couldn't be a more proud person, individual superintendent, of watching them work together with the artist. And the artist made a comment today, which will probably resonate with me forever, is that it's very different when you're working side by side with your client. Most of the time, they get all these ideas in the office. This was very different. The kids have been interacting with the screens. They've been up there moving things around. And today, they were talking about the stories that they have for each of the parts, which they've really put a lot of time in and really thinking. And I think that's a powerful piece that's definitely gonna be a part of the next, you know, sharing as well. So the next thing is they have a scheduled meeting next week. So now the graphic artist goes back. She makes the rounds and makes things a little tighter, things like that. No major changes, evening things out, things like that. They come back next week. And if they need to, they'll come back the first week in January after the break. And then our goal is to possibly have something for that first January meeting, if not the second, depending on where they feel they're at. But they're in a very good place right now. And I will tell you, they're very cognizant of a lot of the feedback that's out there. They're looking at, for example, the face, the arm, you know, the wings. Really cognizant of the fact that this is pre-K-12, you know, those kinds of things. So I think, you know, they're in a different place, and I think they are so motivated to make something that's gonna not only live now, but well into the future and represent Folsom well. So I think that's something, if I could videotape it, there's a lot of people I'd like to show that to, because they demonstrated what we should be doing to be as problem solvers as adults. But that was powerful when the graphic artists said, say, this is very different. And I also say that the graphic artists and PR team from city is also doing it through other school districts, which I didn't know until today. And from what I'm understanding, the process isn't involving the kids as much. And I think that's a very, it's gonna be interesting to watch that. So I think it's powerful, the process that we've used. Is there things that we should have improved upon? Yeah, there's always things you can look back in the rearview mirror and say, gee, I wish we could've, would've, should've. But that's where we're at. So the next, hopefully at our next meeting, I'll be able to provide a much different report for the board to take a look at. I don't know, Nick, if I don't want to call you out. I don't know, you've spent quite a bit of time.
I've just been watching the process because of some of the negative comments that I've heard that the artists, things were changed without the artist's approval. I've asked those specific questions. I've asked, they've been hurried. I've asked if anybody other than students had input. They've assured me they didn't feel hurried. They've assured me that no staff member, be it teacher or administration, has had any input. So I feel comfortable with four of them. And the three meetings now, I plan on being, I plan on seeing the process through the end. And I'm not there as an advisor. I'm just strictly observing. And they are, they're amazing. One of them was even, she couldn't make the meeting today, so she was in Google Meet, and she was giving her opinion from home, wherever she was, because she could see what was happening in the classroom. Again, very proud, give them a lot of credit. They've stood strong even under negative comments, and they're really positive, so.
And their work with the team has been unbelievable, with the adults.
With the adults, yeah.
And they're learning so much. And there's, one of them in particular does a lot in art world already. You can see that she's going to go into it in the future. And this experience, her eyes lit up the other day when she moved over to one of the pieces of equipment and was working there. It was absolutely amazing to watch. And that's what this is supposed to be about. This is about creating a sense of involvement and getting kids. There's something that when they reflect back 20 years from now, they can say, I was so much a part of this. And we're gonna have them try to talk about those things and those experiences. So that's the update on the logo this time. Question, please?
Brian, just for the public to understand, it was always the intent that we did take the designs from the students because we wanted to see their input. But we always worked and we did work with our professional team, promosies, to come up with a mascot for the community, just to make sure it did reach that threshold of, you know. But unlike other districts where they're just going to tell you this is going to be what it is, we really wanted our students to be involved in the process. And I think that's shown all the way through, and what will end up as the final product. I know some people out in the community based off of what they've seen and how it's been done, and might not have been articulated clearly in a way that would kind of show that we have been working with professionals, or that it's not just a student said, I'm on this, so it's going to happen. It's been a process all the way through, and I agree that I'm excited all the professional experience these students will have, and that they can use in their portfolios going on to say they were part of the process.
One last comment for me was the final product will be a product of the last four artists. They've all had input and any changes that were made from the original. So it's not one person. Took that original design and they worked with it from there. So there's a little bit of each of those artists in that final product.
Yeah, I feel very torn on this because I want, we wanted, we wanted this to be student-led, which I think everyone pretty much gathers. And I think that the district really did a good job in doing that. But I also want our community members to feel heard as well. And I don't, I just, it's been a struggle. It's been a struggle because I, I know that not everyone will be happy, right? I mean, there's always gonna be something that people disagree on and stuff, but you know, it is important that you guys are here. It is important that you speak up, because we don't get the feedback that we want or need really from a lot of our, a lot of our community team. I think as a board, I think we need to be a little bit more proactive on stuff versus just kind of being reactive to what is, what's out there. And I also ask that of our community too, right? So I don't know. I'm glad that it's being revisited. I feel very strongly that it was student-led, and I'm glad that we're sticking to that. But I also feel bad for the kids that put all this time and work in and received a ton of backlash from our community. And so that makes me sad, like for them, you know? And I know, I know there's a lot of people that want to be involved or feel that they should be involved, but really like we create that business for the kids, about the kids. And here now, we're saying, you know, now what I'm hearing is, oh, no, no, it shouldn't be left to the kids. I know, I'm saying this.
Oh, I see.
So he's just hearing that.
I see, I'm sorry.
You know, but I just want, I want our community to know that like we want to hear you, we respect our license that you guys have to say. But it was really important to us that it was student-led. So that's.
I mean, just touching on some of what Jess is saying is, we have a student board member here. We have also been in touch with, she has been bringing back some feedback from at least the high school level. We definitely, from the get-go, wanted this to be student-driven, because we are student-driven, we want to hear their voice. That's been very important to me. I brought that aspect in early on in my board career, that we would be listening more to our students. But that doesn't mean that I don't appreciate what the community is throwing out there as well, which is why you were all involved in that name naming process. I'm an alumni of Fulton. I mean, I've heard it from people, you know, they're always gonna be a Red Raider. Yes, if you graduated that way, I will always be a Red Raider. This is so much more than me. This is about our children now, our children in the future. We had to make a very hard decision. You know, there were community members who said we should fight and keep our name. In my opinion, and I can only speak for myself, I cannot speak for my other colleagues, that would have been physically devastating to you, the taxpayer, if I would have just said, well, we're gonna do this because I feel it's wrong, but you're gonna take the brunt of raising of the taxes when the state cuts our funding. I want, I want the community to know that. I'm here for the student, but I'm also here for you guys. We will always be what we were when we graduated. These guys will always be what they are when they graduated. In 25, 30 years, if something has to change. It's not always about us particularly, but our voices in general are all very important. So I appreciate the parents' concerns. I do appreciate those of my alumni friends who no longer live here. I do appreciate all of those students. I'm not sure K through 2, as far as the voting, I know that we had talked about that very early on, Marissa, only because that they were so young that they might not know what they were doing. Third grade up, we started to incorporate from fourth, we had on our student culture teams. I know there's probably more that we can do, and in future endeavors, we probably will try to very much get that word out more. The everything is as it is. But I feel very confident that we followed the process that we had put out from the beginning. Sometimes, we, the board, sat back and said, no, we want that extra survey out for our community members. We said, no, we're not going to rush the logo. We want to make sure all of our kids were able to put that in, because that was something that was talked about being done over last summer. So if we had put that over the summer, we might not have gotten as many of our wonderful artists' drawings out there. And I had seen some of them. They were really amazing. From my understanding, our four artists that were chosen to work on this, they incorporated some of the elements from others' own, not just their own. Is this correct?
That's my understanding.
So there may have been something from the younger elementary or junior high students that they might have pulled into it. I know that this is hard for all of us. I appreciate everybody's voice, but I am, I am proud of our students and what they're doing. I feel bad if there's anybody that was missed. I know that when I had kids in school, I did sometimes miss things. Because we're busy in our lives. We're busy being moms and dads, taking our kids on their activities and we work. And sometimes, as much as, especially Mrs. Hutchinson will throw it out there, we need to communicate better with you. If you feel that our communications are not reaching you, and whether it's through your minds, or your emails, or blasts out on Facebook, please reach out to us and let us know, because we do think that we're getting the information out to you. And if you guys feel that there's something that we're missing, please just shoot us an email, a text. Our email is via clerk@pulten.cnyric.org. I'm here today that somebody was thinking they sent us an email. If it doesn't say cnyric.org, we did not get your email. So make sure that you're sending it to the full clerk email address, so that we can respond to you, but we do need your feedback. You know, if we're sending too many communications, let us know that too. If we're not sending them in the right place, please let us know that too, because we want the rest of this process for the district, for the community, for our students, to go smoothly. And I applaud those artists for coming to us and saying they wanted to do more because they heard you, they heard their student body, and they didn't want to just be like, okay, this is it. They wanted to incorporate more for you guys. So we do appreciate the feedback that they got, and that they, they themselves brought it to us and said, we wanted to form with this. So thank you for supporting them. Appreciate that.
For the elementary parents, we are looking at what we can do with that current logo on an elementary basis. So there's nothing that says we can't have a little dinosaur for the elementary school.
You mean dragons?
Or dragons. And I hope I'm not giving anything away, Ms. Palvino. But there's a, when it's all done, there will be a branding package. And so some of it will simplify for the elementary school.
So the idea is a full branding package. One of the things, if you look in our strategic coherence plan, the original one, which was just ending, there was actually a section in there on communication and branding. Something our district's really never had, because it was the last, the last one we had, Red Raiders was here a long time. But as far as the different things, it really didn't dip down. We had four different elementary schools with four different mascots, if you will. So really, part of this is branding, with branding so we'll be able to meet the needs of elementary families and children, as well as secondary. Because it's very different on the athletic field, perhaps, and the varsity with what you might be having down in kindergarten, pre-teen, right? But how do we come up with that? You know, so that's the piece, and one of the conversations of how would a kindergarten feel about that? So that's one of the things the kids have been really saying. Look at that, what do you think if you had a younger sibling? It's been, it's been an interesting couple of days of working with kids and hearing. I stopped in a few times, in and out, and just watched and encouraged. So, did I see, I think I saw in my eyes, yeah, I thought so.
No, no, I'm fine. I'm happy to, I'm happy to listen. I just, I feel very confident in the work that has been done to the point of being defined as Fulton Red Dragons. Do we like it? Does everybody like it? No. But I feel like we have all embraced it. Like we're moving on, we're moving forward, and we don't have a choice. We are now the Fulton Red Dragons. Okay, what are we going to do with that? We need a mascot. I feel like we've been using the words logo and mascot interchangeably, and they are completely different things. I am not sure if this is correct. I'm unsure of being a board member, but I believe our logo... I'm unsure of being a board member, but I believe our logo would be the F. And our mascot would be the dragon. Because a logo is the symbol, and a mascot is meant as a character. Something that is your face. It is your identity. It's going to be the face of Fulton. When I think of the Fulton Dragons, I am going to see a character on shirts. I'm gonna see a character at football games. I'm gonna see a character maybe on the football field. And that character is, is meant to motivate. It is meant to unite. It is meant for us to be proud as one, as a unit, as Fulton. And I don't, I, I took my personal feelings out of voting because as a board member, I vote on policy and procedure. If I was to vote as an individual, I don't feel like that drawing would draw me into being motivated to do something. It wouldn't draw me into feeling safe. As a matter of fact, it's, it's a great drawing, absolutely. But it's not, to me, it's not what a mascot represents. Um, I feel that there has, I, as a person and going through this process, it's obscure. It's been confusing. It's been great. Because there's so much information coming at you and you digest it to the best of your ability, and then something like this happens. And we're like, "Wait, wait, wait, this doesn't sit well with me." Because this is a forever thing. And I don't, and I wanna feel good about what we vote on and what we're voting for in the future. Because this is not a, this is gonna go away in a month. This is going to be here for decades. It was here way before me, and it's gonna be here way after me. So it's something that everybody has to feel good about. And I, it's not that we're, we're rushing the situation. It's not that we're rushing the process. But I think that we need to be professional enough to know when we have to take a step back and say, "Whoa, maybe we need to stop. The, the kids brought it to our attention. We're hearing feedback, and maybe this is not the best way to go." So now we're taking a step back and we're revisiting that. And it took, it took a student to be profound and realize that, and so we took a pause. And it's for that reason that I, I wanna make a motion as a board member to revisit this logo. Not because I don't agree with it, not because I don't, I, I don't respect the artists. I think that they're wonderful. I think that what they're doing right now and, um, revising it is amazing. But I think we should revisit the vote and decide what we're going to do moving forward as we come to these obstacles that are set in our path. So that we are transparent to the community. I think just hearing and seeing the responses, we want it student-led and we can keep it student-led. But I think it's important for our community to have a say. I really do. The, the students can do it, but the community members are gonna live it just as much as the students. The students are a snapshot, just like we are. And it's a unit. We are a family unit as Fulton. It's our identity. I think everybody should be in, be involved in a vote. And that's my reason, um, reasoning to, to make a motion to rescind that vote from the vote.
Can I ask a question, Jen, just to clarify a few things?
Yes.
On transparency?
Yes.
Couple meetings ago, we were shown the designs. And everybody praised, including you, what the kids had done and what we had come up with.
Sure did.
Then in the following meeting, you had seconded that we should go ahead and vote on it. So I can't see the logo. I think everybody knows here online. So I was taking a lot of my cues from people around me, what it looks like, how the attitude, the mood in the room, be able to read those things, working with people. And so I'm just very confused. Is this, I guess I'm trying to get to, is this a, since we've gone forward, change of heart? Or is this something that you felt all along but didn't feel comfortable sharing with us as a board? I'm just trying to get to where it is moving from me. Because I just didn't understand it.
Yeah, that, thank you for asking that question. And it's a difficult question to answer, Tim, honestly. Um, I was, I was scared to take a stand. I didn't, I'm, I, as a person, it's really hard to be in this position. And to stand up and do something that you truly believe in doing when you feel like others around you want to move forward, it's a hard thing to do. And I succumbed to that, and I'm not proud of it. Um, that's why I'm here tonight saying, "I think we should rescind." Um, it's a learning process. It's, it's a hard thing to do. Um, and it's, yes, I, I don't have a change of heart. I didn't think it was the right mascot. That was my gut feeling. But I did not go with my gut feeling. And that's, that's why I'm saying what I'm saying tonight.
Thank you for helping me understand that.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking the question.
Uh, yes, um, I've got a few things to talk about. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that we are all clear, um, what the role of a board is and make sure our public is clear. There are very few things we can actually do. We oversee policy and procedure. We oversee the superintendent's evaluations and hiring superintendents and budget and finance. That is our role as a board. Um, with that being said, part of, at least my reason, is, um, this heated debate of the logo and the mascot. To me, it's finance and budget. We are running the risk of possibly losing almost $60 million in state aid if we don't do what the state, um, is asking.
They're collecting on this, basically.
So $60 million, while, while I may feel passionately about the logo or keeping or changing, that runs the risk of about $7,000 to $8,000 annually a household a year. I'm not willing to run that risk for my neighbors. My neighbors who are on social security and putting them at a tax liability that they can't afford. Our small business owners here, it is a struggle. We have a large population of our students who are on, um, free or reduced lunches. We hope it's the E P, obviously. Money's tight. This is the reality. We're running the risk of losing state funding if we don't comply with the state. Um, so we have to move forward. What, what does it look like? Um, I agree with my colleagues. We struggle as a district, and I say it, week after week, month after month, communication, especially proactive communication. We need to get better. Um, we need to make sure we're communicating with our community more through, you know? Yes, our students knew and were aware, but our community wasn't. I got more information about the milk cartons as a parent than I did this logo and many other things in the district. We are not communicating enough with our community. Um, we need to get better about it. Um, and then the other thing, because it does go to the board, it's policy and procedure. I will say about the mascot, and this is the last thing, is I know we're revising the logo. I know that we're looking at it. Are we following our procedure? Because if we're, if it's changing the logo from what our students already voted on, should they get another say? I don't know the answer yet, but if we're revising it, should it go back to the students to get another vote? I'm not sure.
That's, that's part of the reason to make the motion to rescind the vote. Just like you said, I'm not sure how to vote about that.
With the number, numbering the vote at 980, that represents a third of our student population.
But we also missed an entire class of mine, which also doesn't sit well with me.
And a class at Lanigan I learned just today. I'm just hearsay. I don't know if that's right. I don't know if that's.
I just wanted to make sure that we're following our procedure. If, you know, that is our role as a board, policy and procedure. If we send it to the students to vote, but now we're revising it, do we look at rescinding it? I don't have an answer. I will defer to our admins and our board president to look into that, but, um, and it's.
What do you think, Harper?
Okay, so, I just have a few things just to talk about. So since the start of the meeting, a lot of people have been talking about student representation. Okay, it's been up to the students. So like you said, there was, you said 900 and?
Eighty.
Eighty-ish votes, okay. There's, how many students in high school? Eight hundred-ish? A thousand, okay, great. I think what needs to happen is, we all took the survey. The students were available to that survey. Let's break it down, grade to grade. Who voted for what? Okay? So I know for a fact, coming from senior class, junior class, the high schoolers are not necessarily happy with this logo. I've had people come up to me, they've been like, "Why didn't vote for this?" I'm like, "I, I know." Now, I mean, we did this as a class, and like a lot of the kids in the class, they all were like, "Oh, what'd you guys pick?" And I'm just wondering where these numbers are coming from? Why there was not as much involvement, I guess? Like, like you said, there's a thousand students, just the high school, and this was available to fourth through 12th. Either it needs to be better shown to younger kids or the, the high schoolers. Like, I just, I wanna know where these numbers came from. I wanna know grade-specific, like who voted for what? Like mentality-wise, like was there something that stood out to younger kids that didn't for the older kids? Like, I feel like it's really important to feel like where this is coming from. Like, do the younger kids feel like one way towards a certain thing? That like a high schooler with a different mentality would feel something different? I feel like this could be where numbers would play a very valuable part in this, to really see where this came from. And I mean, get feedback from the, from that number. Like, I feel like it's really important. And if it was student-led, then we need to try to get that number up.
And so a couple of things that, from, from me, I've had students who approached me to say, "No, I did not vote because I did not want to." So you're going to have students who did not want to vote? Um, I do feel very bad about the class that got, that did not vote or voted on the. Um, time got away from them. That's not necessarily their fault. It, it is human, it does happen. Time did get away. It wasn't anything malicious or anything on anybody's part. Uh, as far as tracking, Harper, that is a question that I asked very early on before we even started, um, getting past, it was like the next day, how, how many numbers did we have? Our districts, to my understanding, did not set up the survey to track grade-level votes.
So the question, there was no question, like previous surveys, like what grade are you in, what building you're in?
Right, because I know a lot of surveys do have that.
And this one, it was the straight three. We didn't, because we didn't, we didn't make that attachment. So you literally have to go through every email. We don't know what they voted. All we know is the email that, that could, you'd have to hand go through all of those to identify.
Grade levels.
Well, then you'd, yeah, you'd have to, want to identify the student, then you'd have to go.
And then you're now seeing what each child voted, and that takes away their privacy. I don't know.
I don't know about that.
Will it tell, will it tell, "I voted for this dragon."
You guys are experts in that.
No, I'm asking this question. I mean.
Not, not this issue.
Not necessarily. So you could go through and look to find out grade level.
I guess the purpose would be to do what at this point? I mean, that's, I'm just trying to, again, we need to figure out how to move forward, is my question. I think Harper's right on par. I'm just trying to figure out how do we get that information? Yeah, you're on, on par.
So I guess a question for you, Harper.
Yeah.
Is, right now, according to what I understand of the process at this point, and we're kinda going back, touching up and kind of shoring up some of those images that were already voted on? Would you like, are you asking then that we send it out for like a yes, no to the grade levels? Or how would you have us approach it at this point? What would you like for your students to be able to do to have some sort of more say at this point in the process?
I mean, honestly, I don't really know. I feel like it could be so different for each person. Like, I mean, at some point, there's going to be some kids, like you mentioned, that are just not gonna wanna do that. That's fine, that happens, it's gonna happen. So be it. I just don't exactly know how to approach each of these grade levels now that it's already been sent out. You know what I mean? Like, this has already been approved in a way? Like, kids have already voted, they're gonna be like, "Why, why are we voting again?" Like, is this being changed now? Okay, so now the questions are gonna arise. Are we actually changing the mascot? So I think that's also going to raise a lot of questions. So I feel like we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure that out if it does go back out to the students again. So just trying to figure out that.
And I guess maybe this would help too. From what I understand, that you told us, Mr. Paul Dino, you had said that we're still sticking with the design we voted on with the F, with the dragon for the round? It's just some of the edits and changes to the finer pieces are being changed, but it's still the same thing that was voted on by the students, correct?
So what it is right now is, it's true to the, the, the charge was to be true to the, the original, the drawing that was done and, and, and selected. So it has an F in the middle, it has, as all of you've seen. You know, what it's looking at now is the F is still in the center, maintaining that F in the center. And then really looking at the head and the arm and the, have really been a lot of feedback, whether it's from community members, whether it's from students. It's all, it's very consistent that way. A lot of issues around those two areas. So they, they've spent a lot of time. And I will say it looks much more dragon than it looks anything else now. So, I mean, that piece was important. It was very clear feedback, but also that sense of holding on to that F. And, and because that was a big part of that, that died, the one that was selected, the mascot that was selected, was that it had that, that piece around it, it was wrapped around that F, like it's pride, you know, that type of thing. And so that was important. So that's one of the charges that that group before has been very focused on, is that. Also looking at, um, I, I called an arm, I don't know what a part of the dinosaur or a dragon is, or whatever the paw, what, arm, whatever you wanna call it, um, is also important. That, that, that was a piece that people felt that, it, a lot of the feedback was it looked kind of too human-like. And so those are, that, that was a big part of the feedback. When you read all, a lot of the statements and the feedback, things like that. And that was, that's been very much a part, we've been in that, of their conversations, at least when I've been there, and I've been there for a huge lifetime. That's what, what I've heard and seen.
Is that consistent?
That's consistent. Great. So the idea was to stay consistent with the one that was selected. And, and what they've done is take feedback from many and try to incorporate it into that, that rendition to, to be true to that, that F in the center kind of connection, that kind of piece. Whereas the other two were a little bit different. They were very different. This one was the only one that was wrapped around the.
So the students have heard you, they have heard the community, and they are trying to re-edit that original piece to incorporate some of the things that they're hearing from their, their community, which I, I applaud in, in our young, our young.
Yeah, I mean, it looks very different from the standpoint that, you know, again, the, the feedback was we needed to change. The, 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 it didn't look quite right to people around, you know, face, as I said, I said the face and the arm.
And we're gonna see it when you see it, Harper.
I know, yes.
Right, well, maybe this will clear something. How the matter in procedures, you can't, we said vote just because you didn't like the way you voted the first time. So.
It's not the way, it's not that we don't like the way we voted last time. It's we're changing what we voted on.
So Mr. Paul Dino, you will check into with our.
Yeah, I can speak, I made a note to speak to Susan.
So that we can find out how we go about doing that in a proper order for our, for our culture.
Right, so if we're changing, I guess my question is, if we're changing, we're changing the logo based on, like the community and the student feedback?
Mostly because of the students that came to us. Because had they not come to us, or if they had said, "We true," because I talked to all of you.
But the point is, we're doing it, we wanted to keep this, we wouldn't have kept it. So the point is, we're changing it based on student and community feedback. That is happening right now. So how, how are we going to move forward with, are we voting on this logo again? Or are they just going to bring it to us? Or are we gonna have a community involved? I wasn't done talking, but go ahead, Tim. It's okay.
Would you think that if it's changed enough, we should have another vote? But if it looks pretty much the same, then basically because it's based off of what we already voted on, that it would be fine to stand on what we did? Because I mean, if they completely change it, I agree with what you're saying. We can't just stand by what we did because it's not what we voted on. But if it's what we voted on with edits, does that mean we have to have another vote? I don't know if that's where you were getting to with what you were saying? If we change it all?
I'm not sure if I can move forward. I guess that's why I think that it should definitely be put on the agenda next week. And I think we should rescind the vote of the logo until we know how to proceed further.
So we're going to look into how we do this following the law, and then we will move forward from there. Because, yeah.
Right.
So taking back a, a step, going back a step.
Going back, but we're not throwing the bathwater out of the beach. You know what I mean, we're not.
But we still have to follow that order of the law.
Right.
That resolution is.
And to your point, Tim, my, my feeling was is that if it is. that if it is changed significantly from what we voted on originally, that the students get their voice here, this has been student-led, so whether, if that's a possibility to bring it back to those students to vote, if we're revising that vote, if it's going to look drastically different, it's, it was up to the students to begin with, it should be up to the students again, and move forward, however is legally allowed.
There's only, there's only one thing to vote, what, they say, they vote no. Are we back to the drawing board with eighty-six different drawings?
You're gonna vote on the one that we.
Right, they're working on one drawing right now, they're working on.
It's not supposed to be changed dramatically.
I think what you're saying, Valen, is vote on the one that we voted on and vote on the intended one, like, choose between the two? Is that kind of where you were going?
I mean.
That's something we're gonna.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I, that's a great question, Tim, I just don't know, I just know my feeling is if we're changing the original logo that the students voted on, and we're saying this is a student-led decision.
Yep.
And we're revising it, and it's going to look.
Different than what they voted on.
Yeah, much, much different than what they did. Do we bring it back to our students to make sure that their voices are heard?
Oh, that was a question for me.
No, 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 not, I was just saying, like, like, just, I was looking for, like, we're, we're saying, we're sure that their voices are being heard. I want to make sure that our students are heard if it's going to be.
So Harper?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be good if, once we kind of have this design that's getting polished up at this point, send it back to the culture committees, the committees four through twelve, and see if they approve everything that's done, and have kind of a vote there? Cuz, cuz those are representatives, I believe, of a different level, correct?
I, I think so.
Four through twelve.
Do you know who was on the culture committee?
I don't.
So I.
Students from fourth through twelfth grade.
Okay. So I think it'd be a.
From every school, there's somebody from, represented from every building from fourth through twelfth grade, each level, that, that culture.
I, I was just saying, I don't know who was on it in the high school.
Oh, so you, you were thinking, you wanted to know if she was asking who specifically?
Who specifically, I was gonna say, I don't know.
That what you were asking is who specifically, or did you wanna know?
Do you know who you represented at the, at the high school?
I do not. I took it to know.
I guess that my question was kind of, I can frame it to everybody, is which body would it be worth getting it back to that is a representation of the student body? To kind of go through and say, like, you know, really, at this point, work good with everything that was done? Or this kind of makes a mockery of everything that is done? Like, I, I don't know if we're able to put it out to the entirety again, or how we would do that, but necessarily putting it on the stakeholders who are the representatives of those bodies, just like, were representatives? I was trying to figure out what would be a way to do that.
I know that, we, we were talking, was the vote really close? Is that what I, thirty-six, thirty-eight? Would it be, would it be a good idea, maybe, and I'm not sure, to do the revised? And then the other two that were so close? In a re-vote?
Well, I just had something to add based off of your question, Mr. Connors. Um, you said if it would be a good idea to send it back to those cultures, committee. So let's say they all vote no. We're back, we took a step back saying that. So we have to be willing that if we go to do that, then you, we have to be prepared that if they say no, what are we going to do then? Then what happens? Because we can't always plan on saying yes.
I think based off of the process and the fact that we have, opened it back up to editing, that the leadership in this community has to own up that we can be open again to that, because not that we wouldn't take more students, or not continue with what we've done, but I think we have to be open to your communication then, if that is the case. Because we put ourselves into this by saying, this is what we have, this is what it is, and then it was put to us as a board to vote for that. You know, we weren't given the option at that point that we could edit or do any more. So I think once we've changed the goalpost once, we can't just say that's going to be the final, that's it, we have to take into account, and if it is voted on at that point by those individuals, that this definitely should not go forward, I don't think we cannot take that into account and go ahead anyways. So I agree with you, Harper, I think that if that's what it is, I think that's what changed, but I think it would be worth bringing it back to those groups. And whatever happens there is where we have to continue to go, and we can't just accept it for the sake of accepting it.
So there's a lot to think about here tonight, but at this point, we are sticking with what we have gone with until we find out what needs to be done.
Right, we haven't done anything with it at all.
Yes, we haven't done anything.
We're not gonna do anything with it, so.
We are, our, our kids are still, we have to get through the process of their revising.
They're still, we're still.
And we may have something else to share, but I guess we'll have to have that discussion as we get closer. So.
All right.
And then have a discuss, I mean, maybe that's a place for a discussion at that point. Got lots of notes, thank you.
Great discussion, folks.
All right. The second item on tonight's agenda, Dr. Lisi, you can talk about the twenty-four, twenty-five budget timeline, which has been presented at previous meetings.
Sure, I have to do that. So, uh, was presented to the board last time, the, the, the timeline. And wanna see if there's any questions or concerns regarding that, and if not, we'd like to hear your approval to move forward.
The timeline, you said?
Yes.
And what I would say is, at the first January meeting, um, we should discuss, um, you know, if we wanna meet, I believe, on the sixteenth or the twenty-third, that, that were the thirtieth. With respect to, uh, budget workshop. So there, on the January sixteenth, we had had a tentative Board of Education, uh, budget workshop. We may wanna have that meeting. So I'm putting out there tentatively for, just to, to have some discussion. We'll have, the state budget should be coming out the twenty, by the twenty-first, by, um, uh, by statute. She has to have it out, so we should get a budget run on those numbers. But we should be able to, we should be talking about our, our budget parameters, we could have that same conversation on February sixth, but we're, we're good. Or the other.
Okay.
Um, and as I said, it could be helpful to have that conversation after we have the numbers, but we also have a board meeting, which is perfect timing on January twenty-third, and if the numbers come in like they're supposed to, the board will have those numbers on the twenty-third, hopefully, if the governor puts certain numbers out.
Okay, so are you asking us today to give you a feel if you wanna go for the.
Well, yeah, I was, I was gonna ask, do we wanna lock in, is there a date where, do we wanna just make a commitment to January sixteenth or February sixth for a board budget workshop?
So it would still be a Tuesday, it would be off from the regular board meeting? Uh, would my colleagues prefer to do it in January on the sixteenth or February on the sixth? Any thoughts on that? I mean, I'm good for either.
Either is good for me.
Brian, you were saying that we might, um, have the numbers by the twenty-third?
The, if the governor hits a lifetime budget by law, she's supposed to give us January twenty-first.
So maybe it would be best to do it on the sixth.
Gives a little bit of time for digestion?
Yeah. So that's a workshop.
So February sixth will be a board workshop. Um, and then the second question that'll go with that is timeframe. We don't have to wait till six-thirty for a meeting, we could start a meeting at five. I'd be more than willing to buy the salad and pizza or something, so you could have a working dinner.
I mean, I'm home at, at four, so. I can be here by like five, I have practice.
So does a five-thirty start, maybe, is a?
Even five-fifteen.
Is five-fifteen? So five-fifteen on, on February sixth at the five-fifteen, and we'll do here at the Fulton Junior High for our first budget workshop. That'll allow us also to really lock in, we should have, we should be pretty far along on our, hopefully, on our district, our, our strategic coherence plan by then as well. So that would match up with setting goals and things that you wanna be, making sure that we have in for consideration into the budget aligned with that plan, as well as, which are our priorities for the district.
Do we have a committee already?
Mister, Dr. Lisi?
Yeah, no.
Budget committee?
We don't.
We have not assembled it as of yet.
You'll let us know when that happens?
Yeah, we have talked about it.
I think it might be good is to, to, um, have, get those parameters all set up and done. And then we, in the past, we've done one or two meetings. I know last year we didn't have a lot of issues, but the last two years, we really haven't had any issues, um, to really have the discussion, but we could. That's been a board decision this year.
We have a lot of budget committee?
Yeah.
I always think we should.
Okay. Is everybody else feel that same way?
I do.
So we'll just, we'll assemble, we have a good base group um, that we've worked with in the past, that are business people out in the community that's interested. I think we should be very clear about the charge for them this year as well. Because I think that's a part of it, they, they really wanna be able to feel like they're contributing to that process as well. In the last two years, we've been given a lot of money, I don't see that coming. Um, since we're talking about budget a little bit, I was on a Small Cities Call today, um, Board of Directors, and right now, the state's looking at a four-point-six-billion-dollar hole. And the way it was said to, um, some super-tenants in the Mohawk Valley capital kind of region, uh, they had a couple of the politicians there, they called it, there are some significant structural deficits at the New York State government level. And specifically, we talked about four-point-six-billion dollars, and that we may not see a whole lot difference from our initial runs um, as well. So, more to follow on that, I hope that's not the news we get. The next item on the agenda is Strategic Coherence Survey Results, Mrs. Guyton?
Good evening. Interesting. Here, um, in your slide presentation that you received in backup, are the results of our Strategic Coherence Plan survey from the fall, our baseline survey. And as always, um, keeping with our mission and vision and our values, some of the questions that you will see reflected in the survey go back to these core charges, um, that we have, and the work that we do in the school district. But why do we do the survey, and I think this is really important, for our community members to know, our staff, and certainly our students who are asked to participate. We use the data from these surveys to help us directly measure the progress that, toward the goals that we set in our Strategic Coherence Plan, so many of the questions tie directly back to goals that are set within our plan. Um, it also helps us identify trends, things that are going well, things that are not going very well, and help us make adjustments as we're going along. These surveys also help us, as Mr. Palladino is leading us through the development of a new strategic plan, to set those priorities for the next plan, um, which we anticipate will be from twenty, go, um, last from twenty-twenty-four into twenty-twenty-nine as a five-year plan. And they also provide opportunities for open-ended comments and questions, um, and we can assure you that every single one of them is read um, and considered as we are taking your input as community members participating in the survey into consideration, um, in our work that we're doing for planning and implementation of programs and supports in the district. So we did make some changes, those of you who participated in the survey probably noticed that, one, it was a lot shorter than in years past. Um, we took survey, uh, feedback from staff, students, and families from previous years' surveys, and we significantly shortened the questions, the number of questions, um, just to focus most specifically on the ones that help us monitor our district and building goals that are in our strategic plans. We also simplified the question language, um, and we aligned it with some common district messages and terms that are used commonly in the district, so that language would seem more familiar. Prior to this year, we did use a survey vendor. Um, we took questions and reformulated them with a district, our in-district team this year, so that they were generated within our district. Um, the survey window was longer, and we set more frequent reminders, again, based on, um, feedback from the community, and in, in those reminders, we included statistics on participation to date. So that seemed to have, um, a very positive effect, because when we sent out, we have eighteen-hundred-and-fifty families in our district, for example, approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty house, eighteen-hundred-and-fifty households, but we've only heard from three-hundred-and-fifty-four families. We doubled that amount in just twenty-four hours in the participation, so that was really beneficial. Um, and then the Likert scale, the rating scale and the survey questions were reduced from five variables to four, which helped us to eliminate neutral responses and really gave us better information for planning, because it's very difficult to draw action steps around in neutral. So those were the changes to the format. For communication plan around the results, um, our building leaders and their, have received these survey results, um, both the district-wide results that you'll see tonight and individual building results, and they have been discussing them with leadership teams and other teams within their buildings, or will be doing so as they're going into some, um, planning meetings and leadership team meetings. We shared the district-wide results with our District Coherence Council on November twentieth. They are the ones who are helping to formulate the goals for the next plan, so we use that data to drive some of their priorities or recommended priorities for the plan. Um, our district teams, elementary and secondary curriculum councils, our culture teams, our bargaining unit leaders, um, we have been communicating and will be communicating with those teams moving forward, so they have this information as well. Um, in December, updates to families and staff, which we hope to put out by the end of this week, we will share the survey results with our entire community. And our principals are also, uh, either already have or have plans to talk specifically about the student responses with their students as well. I know Mr. Murray has addressed the survey results and comments, for example, in his most recent round of assemblies with students. So just, uh, give you a little picture of participation. There are about twenty-four-hundred-and-fifty students in grades three through twelve, which is what we surveyed. And we got thirteen-hundred-and-thirty-five responses, about fifty-five, approximately fifty-five percent of our students who could respond, did respond. For our families, again, we have about eighteen-hundred-and-fifty households, according to our student data management system, and seven-hundred-and-forty-six of them responded. And staff, we have approximately eight-hundred staff, full and part-time, and about fifty-eight-point-four percent of our staff members responded, and you can see it's broken down by location in this chart. Um, so, going back to our current Strategic Coherence Plan, um, we have a goal that ninety percent of respondents to our Student Voice Survey will agree or strongly agree with the statements, I feel welcome in part of my school. This is one of those questions that we revamped, to use the language that we're currently using in school, I feel like I belong at my school. Um, and this year, um, this fall, survey baseline, eighty-three-point-eight percent of our students responded that they feel like they belong at their school always or most of the time. And you can see the two, uh, most recent surveys conducted, it was sixty-eight-point-one percent in the spring and seventy-two percent a year ago. So by comparison, um, here are some more specific, um, graphs for you to look at. The top one is students in grades three through twelve, so that's all students surveyed, again, that's eighty-three-point-eight percent in the fall, said they feel welcome to part of the school. And we broke it down by secondary and elementary, so out the graph on the bottom left is students in grades seven through twelve. Um, in this fall, eighty-one-point-nine percent of our students in grade seven through twelve who responded said they felt welcome, they felt like they belonged at school always or most of the time. And at the, um, elementary level, eighty-five-point-four percent of students in grade six responded always or most of the time. So this is a comparison across stakeholder groups, so it's just for this fall round of surveys, and you'll see the blue bar, the darker blue bar represents students, the green bar, families, and the teal, um, colored bar representing staff, and you can see, um, the percentages for each group. Always, um, forty-six-point-six percent of our students, thirty-eight-point-six percent of our families, um, felt their children felt like they belonged at school always. Forty-eight-point-eight percent of our staff who responded said they always feel like they belong at school. Our next set of questions focused on another Strategic Coherence Plan goal in the area of instruction. And our goal is by twenty-twenty-four, eighty percent of our respondents to our Student Voice Survey will agree or strongly agree with the following statements. Classes are interesting and keep my attention. In class, we often work with partners or groups, and my teachers explain things in different ways so that all students can learn. These three questions go directly back to our instructional priorities, which has been a focus of professional development and instructional practice in our classroom since the beginning of our Strategic Coherence Plan, and actually goes back a little bit before that. What are the most effective instructional, evidence-based, research-based instructional practices that we can put in place to advance student learning? So these questions are designed to help us measure the implementation and impact of those instructions. of those instructional priorities. And for this fall, classes are interesting and keep my attention. 81.1% of our students responded always or most of the time. In class, we often work with partners or groups. 68.7% responded always or most of the time. And my teachers explain things in different ways. 85.2% of our students responded always or most of the time this fall. These charts are also comparison data, so you can see it broken down by students in grades three through 12. Again, that total number, 81.1% said always or most of the time. Classes are interesting and keep my attention. In grades seven through 12, that percentage dropped to 75.3. And among our elementary students, always or most of the time. Classes are interesting and keep my attention is 86.4%. Okay, I didn't, I didn't think you changed the slide.
Sorry.
I'm catching up.
I'll go back.
In classes, we often work with partners or groups. Again, 81.1% of our students across all grade levels said always or most of the time. That occurs in their classrooms. For our secondary students, that number was 58.9% of our students. And for elementary, 77.9%. My teachers explain things in different ways. 85.2% of our students across all grade levels said always or most of the time. And for our secondary students, 78.9, and our elementary students, 91.3. Our next set of questions focused on our leadership area of our Strategic Coherence Plan, specifically around communication. And by 2024, our goal is that students, staff, and families agree or strongly agree that the Fulton City School District provides accurate, timely, and meaningful communication. And so this year, 94% of our families responded that happens always or most of the time. And 94.6% of our staff said always or most of the time. And you'll note, a year ago, we didn't have data. That question was omitted from the survey. Not intentionally. So our data comparison slides, again, you can see that this is families on the top left and staff members on the bottom right of your screen. 94% of our Fulton City School District families responded that communication is accurate, timely, and meaningful, always or most of the time, and 94.6% of our staff. Up significantly from the spring. And here is a chart that shows that those responses across stakeholder groups. This question is not asked of our students, so you'll see the results here for families and staff. 40.8% of our families say always or most of the time for accurate, timely, and meaningful communication. 28.9% of our staff say always. The final set of questions is around family engagement. And our goal of our Strategic Coherence Plan is that 90% of our respondents will agree or strongly agree that our schools actively engage our families in conversations, specifically around the needs and progress of their children. During family conferences, teachers explain specific data about progress. Teachers contact me not just in times of concern. And the fourth question, our school report cards provide families with clear information. And this fall, regarding family conferences, 86.4% said always or most of the time. The teachers explain specific data about progress. 58.9% of our respondents said always or most of the time in response to teachers contact me not just in times of concern. And our school report cards provide families with clear information. 90.2% of our families said always or most of the time.
What have we done different with report cards that we have such a big jump?
That is a great question, because there have not been significant changes at the elementary level to our report cards from what, from last year to this year. You know, the high school has added some specific feedback around student social emotional competencies, behaviors in the classroom that contribute to learning. And so some of that feedback has been added to the report cards. But the rest of the report cards, in the way of grading and other elements of the report card have remained the same from one year to the next.
So you, we don't know why it has jumped from 60 to 90?
We do not know why. Yeah, that change that was added.
Is there more learning-based at the high school, right? Are they doing, is that what they're doing?
They're moving more towards that.
There's moving more towards standard-based grading at the high school, but we have not, the report card has not been adjusted. That's a lengthier process. So those indicators get converted to a more traditional marital scale most of the time. And this is comparison data you can see from year to year around these questions about teachers contact me not just in times of concern. This has remained an area that we need to continue to work on. The next one, there we go. That one, it's okay. And you can go to the next one. Our school report cards, again, it's, it has historically, in the previous two administrations of the survey, and even prior to that, hovered right around 65% of families saying agree and strongly agree. And then this year, that increased significantly to 92%.
But there's been no change at the elementary level?
Correct.
Was that a five-point Likert before?
It was a five-point Likert before, so that could be some of that.
So it forces the choice one way or the other.
Some people could have been neutral.
Which kind of, you could have gone either way.
I also.
Yeah, it's forcing me to say.
So that's a hypothesis, that it's, you know, you have to choose one way or other. The other hypothesis that we've had presented was that the report cards during the pandemic were significantly different. Students were evaluated differently in the past. Grading was, grading looked different during pandemic learning.
Did they cut it? Okay, we don't even have to get into that.
Only. And then for anybody who chooses to view, these are just, this is, this document that's linked here is just dish, a different way to look at the same graphs presented in slightly different formats.
And this report's on Board Docs right now?
Correct.
So that's available. But it's on Board Docs, which is a public site.
And look for it, again, family updates will be going out, we hope by the end of this week. That's that little newsletter that you receive electronically, not the hard copy paper newsletter that you receive in the mailbox, but the one that comes digitally. And it's linked also on our website, so by the end of the week, anyone who chooses to see, to view these or has questions about these, we certainly welcome them.
The kids want to learn about taxes.
We do want to learn about taxes, and we're working on that.
We see the new.
Two different levels, elementary and.
Did you see the new blue ribbon? It's a requirement now.
That they learn about taxes.
They're going to, global finances and personal finance and those kinds of things, household.
In the district's defense, my son came home today, happened well in math class, and they learned, they were doing sales tax today, and they're doing the two things tomorrow. So, we are touching on it.
Any other discussion around the survey results? All right, healthcare costs. Dr. Lisi?
Sure, thank you. So I wanted to provide you with an overview of where we are currently with our, our healthcare costs. As you know, we are self-insured, we have it administered by E N V. But one of the problems, you probably don't have the most up-to-date current report. If I'm wrong, we'll make sure that you get that. You have last year's. My intention was to provide you with some comparatives, so you can see last year's versus this year's and where we are, and I'll make sure you get that. So let me start first with this year's. And I just want to draw your attention. Might have to look up there, just so you can take a look real quick. Just kind of see where we are with our totals this year and how it compares to last year. So the program costs, if you look at the totals right now, where our current costs are as opposed to what we had anticipated, and we do that work with E N V. This time of year, that's fairly typical, because as we head into the fall and into the winter, folks can use their healthcare a bit more, and the spring is, tends to decrease quite a bit. So it will level out. We, both E N V and ourselves feel that it would be the case just based on trends in the past. And again, you can look at the comparative to last year's totals in the prior year to date. And I wanted to show you sort of a graphical representation of that as well at the bottom. If you look at 22, 23, October is always, always fun when it comes to healthcare. There's, there's quite a lot of usage. This year, we did see quite that spike, but there's a little bit of one. Our budget is, tends to be straight across the board. That's kind of how we work this. You'll see the spikes in usage. I would anticipate as we head into March, April, that'll diminish, and you'll see the opposite trend occur there. Also, I want to show you on this particular slide here. If you look at the top, and you look at total program cost, this sort of tells the story in a slightly different way. You look at sort of the per, per-month averages for individual. You look at those costs across the years from 12, 13 to 22, 23, you'll see how that can jump around. So, for example, we had in 1920, a $1,623 per user cost. And then it dropped the following year, continued to drop, COVID was in there as well. And then 22, 23, or $1,497. However, the real story is down below. You'll see that the trend is continuing to rise in healthcare costs. I don't think that surprises anyone. It's something that we'll certainly plan for in our budgeting moving forward.
Do you think that, it looks like we're paying more in our staff loss premiums than we're receiving back? Do you know what the total numbers were for last year?
For last year? I don't have that figured out.
I'm just curious, like, is it worth, is it worth the?
Not sure, but I know that one of the issues, I'll look into that, bring it back to you. But one of the things.
It's obviously not huge dollars.
Right.
I mean, I was just curious.
Sure, sure. I'll find out that answer for you. One of the things I did want to mention too, that we talked about the Healthcare Reserve Fund.
Yeah.
And this, this sort of explains why that's so important for us to follow through with. So we're waiting for the state on approvals for that, to help us offset some of these costs.
Right, we've already reached out to some of our, to help us with that. The, the law requires that each school district that's, that's self-insured, if we want to create a reserve, which we do not have at present, you actually have to get individual legislation for every school district and other. And it hasn't been brought into the past. This should just be something that's kind of captures all districts. But unfortunately, it's not. So I know that we've spoke to Senator Barclay's office, and we'll work through them. We've got templates from some other districts, and we're going to follow their template on how to, how to go through this process. What's that? We will. You'd like to, you're right, you're a self-insured district, or you are as well. So yeah, I think it's something, you know, as, as Dr. Lisi has pointed out, we had a lot of, we've always been very good at that under budget. But you hear oftentimes that healthcare costs are going up. We've seen a couple times this year, other districts where they, their policies aren't being accepted by the hospitals anymore. They're in battles over rates, things like that. You know, and the costs are going up. And so it's something we need to monitor, and I think this reserve. But this is one of the first times we've brought this and presented it to the whole group. And I think this is something that we really need to keep an eye on. It represents somewhere on average between nine and 11 million dollars.
Right.
Is that correct, Dr. Lisi?
That's right.
That number may increase, and if you look at the total budget, what depressed it, 84 million? You know, 11 million is about eight. That's about 16%, my math is a great here. 12%, roughly, a little over 12% of your budget is healthcare.
Do we offer an incentive to not, to not take our healthcare?
There's an incentive in the contract, although there's a certain amount that could be paid as a small stipend that they weren't using our insurance and were using a spouse or something.
Right. And so I guess moving into budget season, if that's something that, because you're right, healthcare costs are going up. Everybody, medical bills are going up, but by a significant amount. I guess I would say, if that's something that we should look at either in the future or moving into budget, I mean, healthcare packages are part of their benefit program, it's included in their salary. If we just offer a small stipend versus their cost of their care to help reduce our healthcare costs, if these are millions of dollars, that might be something that we should consider in the future.
Yeah, E N V, they often present to, there's a, there's a healthcare committee, bargaining new members, things like that. They talk about different tele, telehealth. I know that Mark talks about the telehealth quite a bit. Those numbers have gone up significantly. That really.
Yeah, we have, we have a lot of cost-saving mechanisms that we have in place already that are being underutilized, teledoc being one of them. So we've been on a campaign since last year, and we've increased those numbers and the amount of money we've saved. We have another generic prescription program that is being underutilized. So we're working on increasing how often that is used by providers. And we met and talked about a couple of other cost-saving mechanisms we can put in place. Mail-in prescriptions and things like that. They would have to negotiate with our bargaining units. So, and our bargaining units are very aware of the rising cost of healthcare, and they're, they're motivated to look into these. Like I said, we have some that we already have in place, and we do have others who beat about every other month to try to figure out ways to cut the costs. Because it is, it's, it's going to be felt in the next few years.
It is, and not only that, but we're going, you know, as any industry, we pass, you know, the prices on to our employees, where, you know, they pay an additional 1% or whatever into their healthcare cost every year. So I, I guess what I'm saying is offering incentive or raising the incentive might lure some employees that way as well, because they're going to all, it's going to increase them. But from us, from the cost of every employee and every, not just the district, where I work, where everybody works.
Yeah, we're all paying attention to each other. It's interesting listening to school districts in the consortium. You'd think that would be a totally different fact. Ours comes in more. And yet, we offer more, which is an interesting concept. We've looked at that. That's why we continue to monitor, to see are there different ways that we could explore healthcare, if necessary.
Yeah.
We've been very, it's benefited us. Our benefits, our health benefits are very strong, and they've been managed very well. I mean, they're very, they've been, you know, within budget. But as things change, it's going to be interesting to see how that kind of falls into place and what's the, what's on the horizon for healthcare. That's a large piece of our, our budget.
Yeah. I mean, even myself, I was just doing mine, you know, our, we were going to close yesterday, and I was just doing that, comparing all of our options for healthcare, and just to see the different prices were dramatic.
For sure. Any other questions? It's something that I think we'll continue to educate, you know, all of you, as well as, to put it on your, on your radar as we head into budget season, that it's constantly something that we need to take into consideration and keep an eye on. Any other discussion? Thank you. Just a couple announcements. District Coherence Council meets this coming Monday at 4:00 in this space. That's the 18th. Title One Family Engagement Task Force is January 24th here in this library at 5:00 P.M. And Lobby Day is Wednesday, February 7th. We had some discussion about that today in the, in the Small Cities Board of Directors meeting. Just that, that, that we believe this is going to be a very important year, so more information to follow. The other piece they're looking for, if there's any board members that would be interested in getting more actively involved in the Small Cities Association, let me know. They put their infomercial out again today. They're down to one board member, who's actually the current president of the Assistant Island Vice President, so I guess it might be of next year, we'll see. But they, they, we're down to one. We had four or five just a couple of years ago, so it's kind of changed. This is a very important organization for us. They helped us just pass the debt limit change for small cities. Now we're working on some extensions of those things, where there's other opportunities that other districts in the state and small cities don't have, where we can look at our capital improvement, our other types of debt limits, that we can write them off differently, if you will. And we need to get that up. That's the next challenge. So we're on that next. So again, if anybody's interested, please let me know.
Can you maybe send something out to us?
I'll put it in the cry table.
What's that?
What it means.
What it would entail for, because that, you know, some of us.
Yep, I have a lot of other responsibilities.
A lot of other responsibilities.
But I just wanted to plan that.
Get that plugged in and fit into our.
Sure.
May I make a brief commercial for the Title One Family Engagement Task Force? On the January 24th meeting, based on the feedback of the family members and staff members who have attended, we will be doing a screening of the film Screenagers, Screenagers Under the Influence. And it is a documentary film about the connection between electronic screen and social media use and substance use in teenagers. So everyone is welcome to attend. That is always an open task force meeting. You have to be a standing member. Anyone is always welcome to attend.
That's the conclusion, superintendent.
Thank you. Would someone move Action 4.01 to accept the financials?
Move it.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstaining? Passes 7-0-0. Action 4.02, accept donation. Action four point zero two, accept donation from Fulton Savings Bank?
Move it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. Action four point zero three, disposal of surplus property?
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. Action five point zero one, to approve committee on special education?
Move it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. We will be tabling action five point zero two.
Mrs. Allen, we still need to-
Yeah, you will.
We'll table.
I still, thank you, Mrs. Perry. Okay, so we will be tabling five point zero two, approve amendment on construction management services contact?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. Action five point zero three, to approve computer purchase?
Move it.
Second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. Action five point zero four, to approve destruction of unused ballots?
Move, move it.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. Action five point zero five, to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget calendar?
Move it.
Second. All, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. Action six point zero one is to approve our policies that we read from our last meeting?
Move it.
Second.
Good.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. I would like to ask my colleagues if they would like to batch our personnel seven point zero one to seven point one-two?
Is that all of them tonight?
That would be all of them tonight, Tim.
Move it.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. Tonight's board forum, let's start with Harper.
Um, thank you to everyone for listening to me earlier about the whole student representative thing. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate that I'm here as well. So thank you again to that. Um, thank you for coming and for talking to us. I really do appreciate it. I like hearing from you and us for something. It's really important to me. Um, thank you, Ms. Gattner, for your presentation. I personally did do my survey.
Thanks.
Used to see those.
Thank you.
Um, I think that would be all for you tonight. I look forward to seeing you at Masgats.
Thank you, Harper. Mrs. Hutchinson? Yay! Um, so just two things really quickly. Again, I know I am beating a drum here, but, um, I just want to again encourage our communication to improve. Um, I, you know, if things that are significant and important, they should be blessed about. Texts, reminds, emails, letters home, and, you know, and Facebook. I mean, I know that I, as a busy parent, you know, kids in the district and work and other requirements and, you know, home, family, um, I don't get things the first time. Or I see it pop up in an email and say, okay, I'm going to get right back to that and then I'm putting out fires the rest of the evening and, and I forget it. And I know I do own that responsibility, but this is just what's happening constantly in our community. We need to get better about communicating home with families. Um, and, you know, same with some of our survey results. Well, you know, it's what our community is saying as well. I mean, I'll even say, you know, I've made points of bringing up to admins, you know, issues I'm having with the app and how I'm not being a community member. Several has of not getting response back. Or just recently we found out that, you know, some of the emails we weren't getting, you know, from the board. We just have to get better in locking down our communication and our strategies. Yeah. Um, that's really, yeah. And then the other thing, and I'm sorry to be a pain, but love the new production screen. I'm having a hard time as a board member seeing the screen. It's much lower than that. Hi. Oh, I love looking at my colleagues. I feel like I'm doing this, so if we can maybe get that. Can we do this? It's very low. Um, that would be great for whoever was presenting. Um, and then also, Mr. Digelorm, thank you so much for your hard work, um, with our logo and our mascot and overseeing that process. I truly, truly appreciate it. Um, also, Mrs. Mainville, I applaud your bravery of coming out and saying, I think we made a mistake and we need to pick this up there. It's not an easy thing to say. It's not an easy thing, you know, to do in public. It's not for anybody, especially a board. So thank you for, you know, being strong enough and having a strong enough voice for your community and for our students and everybody to come out and say that. It's not an easy thing for anybody.
And that's it. Mr. Randall?
I agree with Alan on everything. There really is too much to it.
All right. Mainville?
Um, thank you for, community members for coming out. I want you to know that we hear you, we appreciate you. Um, and I'm going to piggyback on what Ms. Hutchinson was saying in our communication. It has to get better. Um, we can do better. We can always do better. Everybody can do better. Um, I'm hoping that now, um, I'm just, I'm hoping for the best. I'm hoping that you feel heard. I hope, I'm hoping that the students feel heard and I'm hoping that we can embrace such an important part of Fulton, which is going to be our new base. It's going to be here for a very long time and I know together we can make it great. So keep the, keep, keep coming to board meetings, keep voicing your opinions and Harper, keep doing what you do at the high school level. And, I mean, together we're going to make it work. We made the dragon work at the, I, I can speak for athletic contests because that's where I'm there most of my days and they've embraced it. I mean, we have Mr. Meeker, you know, on the microphone and the kids are all pumped up and he's doing his thing and, and it's, it's, it's becoming our own. And that's nice to see and we'll get there. I just hope that we take the time to get there so everybody feels a part of it in whatever way that turns out to be. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Kaplan? Um, I just wanted to give a shout out to Valene, our teacher group. I don't know if anyone had a chance to stop by this weekend. I wasn't able to, but my husband brought our kids and said it was awesome. Saw lots of pictures, good feedback. So that was kind of cool that we invited the community to boost this up at the school and do some things for the kids. Um, and I said my piece earlier, so.
Mr. Digelorm?
Uh, Harper, thank you. All right. The, the, the student voice is always important. Uh, Mr. Hanlon, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. I heard, I got a comment about, they were commenting on the logo and the person said, "I love it and I'm going to call it the spirit of the lake." And I thought, what a motivator. I, it just, it pumped me up. I don't know how many, what he feels about that, whether it becomes official or whether it's just something we say. But this person said, "I'm going to call it the spirit of the lake." So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Uh, I really just want to focus tonight on something that I think sometimes gets overlooked, but specifically just how great a lot of our students are doing. Uh, Harper, you know, I say it all the time, you are very eloquent. We are lucky to have you right now and your voice always provides a lot of input on what we need to be hearing from the students. So again, I can't thank you for tonight enough for your input. Um, I really like to do a shout out to, for the kids who did the drawing and ended up winning through the vote. I think, you know, a lot of what's happened as adults has been put onto these students and I just want to let them know that we as a board stand behind you. And if you do have issues or something's going on or you're being old, please reach out because, you know, we stand behind you, we stand behind what you're doing and that none of that should be occurring and that should not be on your shoulders. That should be on our shoulders as adults. So I really wanted to get that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Well, I appreciate all of the feedback we had tonight. It was a very good conversation. It opened a lot of doors. It helped us think, it helped us take in what we've been hearing from the community, from our students. Um, Mr. Palvina will get back to us tomorrow. We will, um, see where we're going from there. But in the meantime, we're focusing on, on the revisions that our artists are doing um, and to see where we, where we go from there. Um, I, I am proud of our students, those who have voted, those who put in the drawings, those who, um, were part of naming, um, the red dragons. I love that you said that they're embracing that as you're seeing that on the field with Mainville. So, um, you're right, we will get there. And, and, um, it's not easy work all the time, but we're here, we listen. Um, and like I said, especially on the communication piece, if, if, if you, the community has a suggestion for us, please, please let us know. Mrs. Fallon, or Mrs. Fallon, she is Mrs. Fallon. Mrs. Hutchinson would love to have a, a remind list every day, Dr. Lucy, so that she doesn't forget. Um, but I too, I have been in her shoes where I see an email and I say, oh, I'm going to get back to it. And then the day gets on and I, I don't get back to it. So I totally understand where you're coming from. Um, communication is key. Um, I, I thank you all who have come, who have commented, who have sent feedback to us throughout the community, but we're at that point in the, um, meeting where we can open up to second public forums. So if anybody from tonight has any comments or concerns on anything that was on the agenda, now is your time to address us. And just make sure you state your name for us.
Hello, my name is Todd Shear. I'm a light Todd Shear. I'm a lifelong resident of Fulton. My grandmother was a lifelong resident. Her mother, very proud of Fulton. I just want to address some things that were said tonight about the logo, how it was presented to the community. I follow your Facebook page. I never saw anything about the logo until a couple of months ago. So I went back into your Facebook page to, like, January. There's a Facebook post in January, it's got like ten likes. The algorithm, I want to also say, I'm a designer. I've worked in design, PR, marketing my entire life. I've worked branding with huge brands. Yes, Coach, Johnson and Johnson, Bausch and Lowndes. I would have loved to have been a part of the branding logo committee, but I didn't learn anything about this and everybody I know, taxpayers, didn't until a couple of months ago. The information didn't get out there well. I've heard about surveys going out to residents. Myself and everybody I know didn't receive a survey. Did it come through the mail? Did it come through email? Was it just on Facebook in those posts? I think that's why there wasn't a lot of community involved. As a designer, somebody who works in the creative field, there's many ways your PR team could have touched practically this entire county for very little money. With digital campaigns, Google search and display ads. You could have made sure that everybody knew about this, but it didn't happen. I also want to say kudos to the students that spoke up, who did the designs because they were nice designs, right? But how did that get passed? How did a PR department give that to you and say, here it is, this is the one? I just was flabbergasted like most people. And I think people are, I know a lot of people are upset about Raiders, but I think the thing is we accepted dragons. We're dragons. Let's be some awesome dragons. Let's have an awesome logo or whatever. It's, I hear it being called logo mascot branding. You know, you've got to decide what it is with your brain, you know, first of all. And your PR team should be advising you on this. Let's make it awesome. What was presented to the community does not represent the community. At the beginning of this process, the first post I went back and saw, you said, "We want your involvement. We want your feedback." And now that narrative's changed to it's the students. That's all I want to say. So just think about that.
Anybody else like to address the board again?
Just one other piece of conversation. I appreciate that it was student led, but the students did lead a petition. The students led, I know that I watched the eleven o'clock news the other night and saw a news team here. The students are leading another discussion that I do think should be just as considered when we say it's student led. So although I think I'm still a little bit confused and it sounds like you're going to go back to see what you legally can do for what the process would be, I, I, I encourage or would appreciate as a member of the community, that it would be a little bit more of a setback than just a presentation of the changed, um, logo mascot, whatever it might be, and that be the final step. So something that does incorporate the rest of the community, the rest of the student body. I know that students do have a voice, but as a parent, I should have an opportunity to say what my kindergartner, fourth grader, elementary student is wearing on, on their logos and what, what type of, you know, mascots they have on their hats and their school attire and sports teams. So I think it is something that's worth that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for addressing our board. We're going to move on to action eight point zero three, executive session. Somebody move that? Move it. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstaining? Passes seven zero zero. Um, we're going to step out for a few minutes for executive session. You are welcome to stay, you're welcome to go. For those of you who are joining us from home, we appreciate this and we will be back in a little bit. Thank you very much.
Welcome back. We are going to adjourn tonight's meeting 9:01. Can I have somebody move that?
Move it.
All right. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Pass is 7:00. Thank you very much for joining us. Everyone have a great evening.
Have a happy holidays.
Oh right, last minute happy holidays everybody.